... which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. We will start with the report of the chairman. Last week, we had some discussion regarding public participation and specifically around the reading of letters. So just to reiterate, what we discussed within those last two weeks are, moving forward, any letters that come into the board will be distributed to all the board members and made part of the public record and posted on our website along with the meeting minutes. But moving forward, we will not be reading letters at our Board of Education meeting anymore. All right, next up is our recognition of our 2022 Teacher of the Year, who is Mr. William McDonough. I'm sure people have things to say, so Bill, come over here.
Come on over here, so we can embarrass you a little bit, Bill.
Yeah.
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure for me to introduce Bill as, we recognize him as Monroe's 2022 Teacher of the Year. Bill began his, his teaching career at Massey in 1993 as a Massey, as a, as a math teacher. In around 2005, Bill started working in our Career in Technology Education Department as a computer science teacher and pretty much started our computer science program. Bill has written the curriculum for all of our Massey computer courses, including computer science, programming, engineering, robotics, and gaming, and two advanced placement courses as well. I'm probably, I'm probably missing stuff. Bill, Bill completes and manages the Perkins Grant every year for us, helping us to use the funds to buy state-of-the-art equipment for the entire CTE department. He's the past president and current treasurer of the Connecticut Technology Engineering Educators Association. He also started Massey's VEX Robotics Team about a decade ago and has made it one of the premier clubs, not just at Massey, but throughout the state, region, and nation. As one parent mentioned in her nomination, when Massey arrives at a competition, all schools start to buzz that the best team around has arrived. The, the robotics team meets practically year-round. I know there's 102 kids over in the eye wing right now, heading home. They meet year-round with three two-hour work sessions per week, eight to 12 competitions per year, followed by state, regional, and national events at the end of the year. One of several nominations that Bill received was from a former student, a female, who's now in computer science at the University of Massachusetts, and I just wanted to share, share a story that she, that she conveyed. She says she owes it all to him. She shared a story in her nomination where she remembers walking into his class on the first day and looking around the class, thinking, "This is so not my thing. It's all boys. I'm gonna feel left out. I need to drop this class." After approaching her counselor to drop the class, she said, "Mr. McDonough came up to me and told me to give it a chance. Looking back, I'm so glad I did because I would've missed out on a lot had I not." With his support and constant motivation, not only was there a spark of interest in the field of computer study, but I gained a lot of confidence when working in a mostly male-dominated field. So we're very happy to recognize Bill tonight, and I'm also excited and proud to introduce Tony Scott, our state representative, who is gonna make a proclamation for Bill this evening.
On behalf of the Connecticut State General Assembly, myself, State Representative Tony Scott, and also both state centers that we have in Monroe, Senator Kevin Kelly and Marilyn Moore, congratulations on your, on your Teacher of the Year award. All my kids are in seventh grade in Jaco. I look forward to them. You'll have the experience of either robotics team or having you as a teacher in the next coming years. So I look forward to it. So congratulations, and I just want to issue the citation signed by the team here at the General Assembly. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. I'm gonna go home.
Thank you, Bill. And for those of us who were at the convocation back in August, and Bill did his speech, I will say that I was very moved. I started crying through the speech. It was so beautiful and the presentation. It's a shame that not everybody gets to see that, but it was beautiful and we couldn't be prouder. You represent Monroe very well and we're thankful to have you here on board and our, and part of our team here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, we will move on to item B, which is introduction of our 2021-22 Massey Student Board Representatives. Steve or Joe, who's talking about them?
I can say a few words. If I screw it up, Steve, please correct me. But very happy to introduce, if you guys could just wave, Aiden Silvestro and Allison Oliar, who will be joining Melanie and Sujah as our new Board of Education Student Representatives. There were a number of students this year who applied to serve as board reps, and Mr. Swenson and Ms. Pantaleo, who's the head of the Massey Student Government, interviewed a number of students with Aiden and Allison coming out on top. What we're going to do, this is probably one of the few times all year that all four of them will be here, but Aiden and Allison are both juniors. They'll alternate meetings, so we'll always have three reps at, at every meeting. And then next year, they'll be the, the senior reps there, like Melanie and Sudra, and hopefully, you know, we can continue this kind of format where we have, you know, kind of two nights in waiting kind of a thing. So, so both will sit at either, every other event, unless Melanie or Sujah can't attend, and then obviously you're both welcome to attend. So, welcome to, to both of you.
Thank you. All right, next up, and I forgot this, Shannon had to leave. She had a prior engagement and couldn't be here this evening. Alan, can you act as our acting secretary? And then I need to make one change to the agenda, which is item number three under the report of the superintendent. That would be community program. I need to move that to item A under presentation. Sorry, C1, community program, and we need to move that to 8A, because that's actually a presentation that we're having this evening.
We'll have this presentation first.
Yes. Sorry, it'll be item B, because A is gonna be the knee-ass presentation and B will be the community program. So I have a motion to move that agenda item. Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Thank you, Nick. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Christine. Do I have a second? Dave. Nick, I know you had one correction you sent me with regard, this is so loud, with regard to the meeting minutes. One of the votes is incorrect. Do you want to highlight to Diane which that was?
Sure. It's the last page of the September 13th meeting, and it was our motion to approve the MOU with the library union. It did pass five to two, but those who voted yes and no are flipped, and I will let Diane know which one is which.
Thank you. Joe, we have our new Stephanie Elementary School principal here this evening, so I'm going to let Joe introduce her to everybody.
Absolutely. And if I could just ask Ashley Fenari, if Ash, if you could come on up for a second? I could hopefully not embarrass you too much. I want to, I want to just begin by thanking the Stephanie Elementary School Principal Interview Committee, which consisted of Board of Education members, Jeff and, Jeff and Jerry, teachers, administrators, parents, Jack, Diane Behringer, and myself. Ashley was, Ashley was selected out of nearly 40 people who applied for the position. Massey is a graduate of, of Massey who earned her BS in Education from Western Connecticut State University, and her MS in Reading from Southern Connecticut State University, and she completed her Educational Leadership and Administration Certification at Sacred Heart. Ashley taught in both Shelton and Fairfield before being named the Assistant Principal at West Elementary School, a position she's held since 2014. That's in, in New Canaan. She comes with very high regards from New Canaan Superintendent Brian Lutzey and West Elementary School Principal Jan Murphy, who both praised Ashley and credited her for playing an active role in the shaping of the positive school climate that they enjoy at West. Cute, quick story, on, on Friday, Ashley was introduced at first to the staff at, right after dismissal, but she got there a few minutes early. I found out she was sitting in the parking lot. I think she was kind of spying to see how dismissal works at the school. So I said, "Come out of your car and see how, see how it looks firsthand." So, you know, sure enough, you know, she, she came right out. And I know during her, you know, during her conversation with the, the teachers at Stephanie, she talked about being a kid's first person, and that came through loud and clear as she was watching dismissal. It took about five minutes before she started actively engaging with the kids, helping with dismissal, tying shoelaces before the kids got on the buses, you know, herding kids to the buses and whatnot. So it was, it was great to have her there. And then she was fortunate also, or we were fortunate also, that Ashley was able to attend the Stephanie Spectacular Friday evening and meet a lot of the family. So it's been a really nice transition into the district. Ashley will start full-time with us on Monday, the 11th. So she's transitioning someone for her position, and we'll have a little transition with Deb Cavaci, who's been over there. So we're really excited to have Ashley with us.
Because I always have something to say, I have one thing to say, if you don't mind.
Please.
That, you know, as I've been going through this process, I received one email, I've received many emails, but one of them struck me, and it was, "Welcome, welcoming me home." So thank you for that email. I'm happy to be here as a Monroe graduate, and I'm happy to be home. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's another successful. Hi. Yes, absolutely. Coming home. Any other further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and first up is our Massey Board of Edu, Board of, sorry.
Good evening, Board of Education. I hope everyone is having a marvelous Monday. In terms of athletics, on Saturday, the Massey Field Hockey Team secured a win against Hampden, 4-0. Girls' soccer suffered a devastating loss against Trumbull, against Trumbull, 1-0 on Friday. Boys' soccer won against Walcott Tech, 7-0 on Friday. And unfortunately, the once undefeated Massey Panther Football Team lost against the Daniel Hyde Tigers, 49-21 on Friday. And the girls' swim team also suffered a loss against Weston on Friday.
Massey will be holding the Think Pink Cancer Awareness Day on Friday, October 15th, and Be Positive Club will also be holding a childhood cancer fundraiser at Lakeside Nutrition on Saturday, October 9th, and Sunday, October 10th.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. So I'm just gonna briefly discuss Spirit Week that's happening on Massey from October 25th to the 29th. So Monday's gonna be pajama day and everything but a backpack. Tuesday's gonna be a decade duel with 80s, 70s, and 90s and 2000s themes. And Wednesday's gonna be color day. Thursday will be a, a different grade day, so seniors are gonna wear camo, sophomores are gonna wear country, juniors are gonna dress as their favorite superheroes, and freshmen are gonna dress as their favorite movie characters. And Friday, students can wear red and white Massey colors.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I wanted to bring up that there's a new club at Massey that was just introduced called Lemonade Mouth. The club is filled with aspiring musicians who have the opportunity to either create their own compositions or participate in an acapella group. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anybody else have committee reports this evening?
Policy met tonight. We had a few items on the agenda, but only got through two, so we'll be taking two policies to the board for first review next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Nick?
I was gonna say the Board of Finance met, not this past Thursday, the Thursday before, and I'm sure we'll get it later on.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to public participation. As I mentioned, we are not reading letters. We did receive between the last meeting and this meeting one letter from Caitlin Colazo, excuse me, which was distributed to the entire board and will be part of the record. Other than that, that's it. I know that Joe has a list of people who signed up for the evening. As Jack grabs the list, I just want to mention, our parameters come up to the mic and name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to make your comment. Thank you. Michelle Orr is the first person up.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Orr, 12 Marsh Pond Lane. Fear and condemnation of transgender children was not included in public participation at prior meetings or in letters submitted by town residents. Opposition to ideology that doesn't serve all of our children is what has been expressed by those parents willing to stand up for their children. The basis for my opposition lies with certain aspects of this policy. Women's rights are supposed to be protected by Title IX, not hijacked by a male identifying as female. Our young women have rights to private spaces free from male occupancy and fairness, rights to fairness in sports. They have a right to thrive and advance in their sport. Please read about the three female track athletes right here in Connecticut that were robbed of their rightful places in their sport by biological men. Until a child becomes old enough to physically transition, they are in a mental state of being the opposite sex, not a physical state. Therefore, in grade school settings especially, I believe they should be given the option to use a bathroom that conforms with their current anatomy or use a private bathroom. The real concern with bathroom choice is the only requirement for a male to enter a woman's restroom is affirmation that they identify as female. This absolutely gives male predators free access to women in a vulnerable setting in which they shouldn't be placed in harm's way. According to studies by the Crimes Against Children Research Center, one in five girls is a victim of sexual abuse, and children are most vulnerable to sexual abuse between ages seven and 13. Providing free access to women's restrooms is just another way male predators will have the ability to harm women. We have a very inclusive bullying policy that includes gender identity. We have a reporting system for bullying. The only data I was able to obtain from our Assistant Superintendent was for reported incidents that were racial or of sexual orientation. There was one for 2017 to 2018, one for 2018 to 2019. We don't count last year, that's irrelevant. It was zero. If it's accurate to assume that transgender bullying falls within sexual orientation, this data would suggest either bullying is underreported or it's not occurring very often. A student's sexuality should be a private matter, and the school's responsibility to a transgender child should be no different than any other child, to provide a safe and nurturing environment free from discrimination and bullying, where children are learning what they need to in order to become successful young adults. I think we need to better understand the expectations for this proposed policy and the impact it will have on the rest of the students. Lastly, I think we should be mindful that there is active litigation around the current administration's interpretation of Title IX, and adopting a policy prematurely is not in our best interest. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have is Janos, Janos, I'm sorry, and what's your last name?
Padge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you'd just name, name an address for the rest of the person.
Sure, my name is Janos Padge, from 17 Metview Terrace.
Thank you.
I graduated Massey in 2007, and I wanted to also speak on the transgender policy being proposed. I'm a gay man, for the record. I'm 32 years old. I have plenty of trans friends. I have no problem respecting them with their pronouns and their given names, obviously. In June, I commented on a post that garnered a lot of attention. I spoke about my gender dysphoria in grade school when I was discovering my sexuality, and the difference between the word sex and gender, and how they cannot be used interchangeably. After, many parents reached out and asked me to speak, many, and some of their stories really broke my heart. I think that we do need a trans policy to protect the trans youth in our schools. I truly do. But I think this policy is very vague and has many contradictions. In the beginning, it mentions there should be no discrimination based on sex, orientation, gender identity, or expression. But sex is not defined in the policy at all, and we know there is a reality of biological sex. We know that there are males, and we know there are females, and no one is assigned a uterus at birth. Women men straight, women have miscarriages, women struggle with pregnancy. It's a real thing, and the bodies are very different. So the transgender definition in the policy says, "People whose gender identity, expression, or behavior is not typical of assigned sex at birth." A lot of people would fall into that category. It's very vague. It doesn't mention anything about gender dysphoria or the mental health aspect of it, which many people require social transition and medical transition and sometimes surgeries to really alleviate it, and they struggle with it every day. Title IX was created in 1972, which stopped sex discrimination. But the Obama administration, which I supported in 2012, changed the definition of sex between gender identity and trans status. And then when Trump came, he made it so that the states can decide. The CIAC policy, obviously, has already stopped a lot of biological females from advancing in specific sports. We know that it is a reality. The fastest female on this planet, who died in 1998, ran the 100 meter in 10.49 seconds. There are several high school boys who can beat that. So we know there is an advantage in athleticism. I also want to speak about the privacy part, because there is very vague wording about the child's transgender identity being kept from parents on a case-by-case basis. And it mentions that this is a medical situation. It is confidential medical information, but how are we keeping this from parents? I don't understand that. This is a real situation, and parents need to be involved. So that needs to be reworded in the policy. I know that it is, I don't want to say incorrectly, but it is being pushed in schools. I have many public school teachers who show off on social media how they're pushing it on their children. And I have a friend who teaches in Trumbull Elementary School, who just recently posted on Facebook that they have the pronoun and gender identity talk with their elementary school children. They don't need to be learning about this right now. They will learn about it, but not at that age. It's far too young. So my main concern is the vagueness in the policy, and I have no problem speaking more about it, but I cannot get all that out in three minutes, at all. But I thank you very much for hearing my voice, and I'm looking forward to hearing others. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Lisa Marie Pinto.
I can take this off, right?
No.
No?
Masks have to stay on.
Okay. Lisa Marie Pinto for Cherry Hill Circle. Okay. I have so many notes. Like we just said, I cannot get this out in three minutes. I want to start by saying, I fully support the LGBT community. I have many family members who are gay, lesbian, bisexual. I have friends who have trans kids. Fully supportive. I give, I give mom hugs at the parades. I think my notes are so all over the place because I'm so concerned of what this would do to the children, especially on an elementary school level. The school's gonna be telling the kids one thing, parents are telling them another. The minute you have doubt with a child of if their parent is right or wrong, you're putting that kid in danger. If my kid questions me, then won't question me about taking candy from a stranger, doing drugs, getting in a car after drinking, that bothers me to, and my kids are out of the system almost. I put five kids through here. My, my youngest is two more years and we're done. Not even here for my children. I think planting these seeds in kids' heads is wrong. It's not fair. Their minds aren't able to even grasp this stuff. To ask them, you know, "What gender are you?" I mean, why would you just hand them anxiety that way? We can support these children, all children. I want to just do a few statistics. Child abuse, physical, mental, emotional, sexual, financial. Those are the abuse. One out of three girls will be sexually abused before she's 18, one out of five boys. So that's a quarter of all children will have been victims of sexual abuse. Forty-two percent of them have increase of suicidal thoughts, and 90% know the predators. Sexual abuse is the taboo we don't talk about, but yet it's the challenge most kids have. Eating disorders in teens, 4%, 13% in women. Anxiety, 7.1%, up by 20% in 2019 and keeps going up. Depression, 3.2%, clinical depression for children. Divorce, 36.6%. Poverty, 14.4%. Children being raised without their fathers, 21%. Alcoholic parents, 10.5%. LGBT, 5.6% to 6.8% in the community as a whole. That number, I couldn't really grab, get a clear one. Eight percent from four to 18-year-olds, less than 1% are transgender. Gender dysphoria, less than 1%. We are making a policy for less than 1% of the children when we have all these other stu, all these other issues? The kid who's hungry does...
Excuse me, if you can start wrapping it up. That was the timer.
That's what I mean. You can't get this done in three minutes. You can't, you just can't get it done in three minutes. But a lot of kids have issues. Saying that one group is more special than the other is not benefiting any of the kids, especially the ones you're trying to protect. I could write more. I could go on. This isn't fair to anyone. And oh, lastly, if I were putting a kid in the system and you were putting him in danger by telling him something I might not 100% believe, and there's a chance he's not gonna believe me, I wouldn't be putting the kid in the system. I don't leave my kids anywhere that are in danger, anywhere.
Thank you. Just for those who the three minutes is not enough for, if you do email us, like I mentioned at the beginning of the chairman's report, we will distribute that to the entire board, and it will be part of the permanent record that will also be on the website for anybody to review, just so that you know that. Next up is David Orr, please.
Hello. My name's David Orr. I reside at 12 Marsh Pond Lane.
Thank you.
I just wanted to touch on what Janos had discussed regarding the fluctuating legal foundation for what has been interpreted through Title IX regarding transgender. On June 16th of this year, the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights issued a notice of interpretation explaining that it will enforce Title IX's prohibition on discrimination on the basis of sex to include, one, discrimination based on sexual orientation, and, two, discrimination based on gender identity. Four federal appeals courts have recognized that laws prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sex also prohibit discrimination against transgender people, meaning that transgender students have a right to equal access to educational opportunities under Title IX. Among other things, the law requires schools to respect transgender students' gender identity with regards to dress codes, names, pronouns, and access to single-sex facilities, including bathrooms. Title IX also protects transgender and gender nonconforming students from gender-based harassment and bullying. That is, harassment or bullying a student experiences because they do not conform to stereotypical notions of masculinity and femininity. The anti-bullying policy of the Monroe Public School System reaffirms that same protection. The Education Department's recent interpretation effectively reversed a Trump era policy that said the opposite. And in 2017, the Trump administration had rolled back stipulations offered by the Obama administration regarding transgender students in public schools, which had stated that Title IX protects the rights of transgender students to use restrooms and locker rooms that match their gender identities. So with Biden now changing course, in the last five years, the federal guidance on Title IX has changed numerous times with each administration. There are also numerous pending lawsuits by school boards in states around the country, as well as volumes of proposed legislation on each side of the issue. Considering the volatility of the issue at hand and the constantly changing interpretations and guidance on Title IX, the most responsible course of action for this Board of Ed to take is not to adopt the proposed policy, but to maintain the current existing policy, which prohibits bullying, and to ensure that existing policies align with state and federal law, including current Title IX interpretations and guidance. I would also encourage this Board of Ed to issue a collective statement or resolution taking a stance against transphobia and hate, and to encourage understanding, inclusion, and the respect of all respectful viewpoints on these matters. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next up I have Gary, and I'm gonna mess up your name again.
Don't even say it. It's not a big deal, trust me. How's everybody doing?
Very good, thank you.
Good. Thanks for not pronouncing my last name. My name's Gary Krigliano, 131 Longview Road. Members of the Monroe BOE and concerned parents, I'm here tonight to speak to you about greed and fear. Our BOE has sold their souls to Lamont and have sold the rest of us down the river. Here's an example of how. Here's an example of how. This is how much the Berlin School District was paid by the Fed to keep your kids in masks through the ESSCR funds. Many of you don't know what the ESSCR funds are. It's an elementary and secondary school system emergency relief fund. Just an example, Connecticut was $1,166,328,632. Where does that money go? Your taxes paid them to mask your children, which still, our BOE remains to enact child abuse on our children. We gave you the science, now show us where the science for masks is. Every parent deserves to see peer reviews and clinical trials that are going by. It's obvious you'll never be able to come up with this information because it doesn't exist. If you were a district school getting that much money, you had the best educational attorneys in full weight of corpse, pharma behind you, would you mandate masks and ignore the parents' children's health in real science? This is only the tip of what's going on. Remember the 22 cities down the FCCOG that sent Lamont the letter demanding the issue state-weight mask mandate? How much federal money do you think the individual towns and cities in Connecticut are getting to mask mandate? Shipman &amp; Goodwin LLP and Birchman &amp; Moses PC are the two law firms that are retained and represent more than 150 of the 170 school districts in the state of Connecticut. That's 90%. Shipman &amp; Goodwin have direct ties to Democrat Speaker of the House Matt Ritter. Your BOE has sold their souls to the devil and have sold you and your children down the river out of fear and greed. If you still have a child in the school district in Connecticut and have not pulled them out, you need to know what you're up against. Do your research. They don't lose. It appears Shipman is taking the lead right now in the state on lawfare. FYI, Shipman &amp; Goodwin are actually 150 lawyer firm now operating in Connecticut, New York, and DC. They are now internal law firm, almost 7,500 lawyers connected through Shipman &amp; Goodwin LLP. That's 150 versus 7,500. Does anybody find that kind of odd? I mean, it sure seems that way. Why does a little New England state like Connecticut need 7,500 lawyers? These BOE are putting fear and greed ahead of doing what is best for the parents of their children. We need to continue to stand up against them. This November, vote them out. Our children deserve better. There's just one thing I want to say to you guys. I believe most of you have good hearts. I don't know what's going on as far as who's being coerced in this, but I'd like to believe that there's great in all of you, because that's just what I like to believe. As far as the way things are going, you know, I have a question. Do we still do the pledge of allegiance in elementary school?
Okay. Time is up, and it's a one-way conversation. It's not question and answer.
Okay, so you guys don't do that anymore?
We do not respond to questions and answers.
That's fine. I understand. I've left everybody information, so you guys can actually read and get what you need, so you can start doing your own research and start seeing what you're up against. I'm going to leave this over here. You guys can all collect it.
All right. We will... that is the end of who I have signed up for, in advance for public participation. Is there... I will open this up to anybody else who would like to participate.
Mandy Wall, 95 Bart Road. I actually did sign up in advance.
Oh.
May have come just come late, Mandy.
Oh.
After it's printed.
Okay. So, my name is Mandy Wall. My pronouns are they/them/theirs. I reached out to several Board of Education members about this privately last week, but I also wanted to bring this to the attention of the entire board. I was misgendered and not addressed by my proper pronouns in the August 16th meeting minutes, despite stating my pronouns at the start of my comment like I did here tonight. I request that the board update these minutes, so I am referred to with they/them instead of she/her pronouns, and that the board be more mindful about pronouns moving forward, especially if someone states what they are during their comment. I'm not sure if I'm the first, but I know I won't be the last transgender or non-binary person to voice my opinion at these meetings. I know this board values public participation and feedback from the community, so I ask that you please take this step to create an atmosphere where all residents feel comfortable while speaking without fear of being misrepresented or misgendered in the midst. I also ask, when I looked at the agenda for... and the presentation for Monroe's new community-based transition program for students enrolled in special education, that the topic of self-advocacy be included and addressed, as learning how to advocate for my needs as an autistic person has enabled and empowered me yet to speak up and stand up for myself when requesting accommodations in different situations. I didn't learn anything about self-advocacy when I was a student at MasC, despite having a 504 and an IEP plan. These are things I learned later from disabled peers I met in college and at conventions. And not teaching disabled students how to be a self-advocate would be doing them a huge disservice by not giving them the tools, so they need to navigate a world that was not made with their needs in mind. When Monroe Public Schools talks about empowering students, we need to empower all students on self-advocacy is the key to empowering disabled students, especially in transition. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could just touch base with our board...
It was actually corrected.
Oh, it was corrected?
We've corrected it already, Mandy. Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak this evening? I think I'll do you.
Hello. My name is Jamie Krensky, and my address is 7 Colton Tail Lane. I just have a very brief thing to say. One is, it's really important to hear every person that comes up here, no matter whether they agree with you or not, actively listening and hearing their voice, hearing what they're saying and what their intentions are and where they come from is so important for all of you, not just to think about your rebuttal or what you're going to write next. So please, all of you, I implore you all, listen to what these people have to say, everybody. And I also have to say that my son has gone through birth to three. He also had services. He has had tremendous strides in self-advocacy, so I'm really sorry to hear that you didn't have a good experience. But my son is in sixth grade, and he's done very well, and I hope and pray that he will continue to do that here in Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
There's something.
Yep. Sorry. Nick, I'll just do you first. Let everybody else speak first, please.
Good evening. Marie Blake, 359 Wheeler Road. First of all, I want to thank you all for the time that you give to the board. Last board meeting, it was said that you volunteer and you give up your family time, and it is appreciated. And I know your job has become harder just with the events of the world and decisions that you have to make. I want to piggyback off the last speaker. I also think it's important to hear everybody. The three minutes is allotted. I'm... I don't know how I feel about the letters being submitted, because I get the minutes probably like right before the meeting, so to say, but I think we need to hear our tones and our attitudes. And sometimes they're hurtful, and sometimes we feel like we're being attacked, and because of that, sometimes we become emotional. And I think we need to put our emotions aside, and we need to listen to both sides. You're on a board of nine, right? So that you have nine minds, nine collective brains that all think differently. And I think together, if we put our minds and discuss and listen, we can come up with something that would be equitable for everybody. I know that your interest is for all students of Monroe, not just some, not just select groups, but for all students of Monroe. So I just want to urge and suggest that we keep public participation moving forward, that we don't cut people off, even if it is something we don't like to hear. I mean, this is a great turnout. I've never seen a turnout like this at the Board of Ed. I asked a colleague, a former colleague, now that I'm retired, are students being recognized tonight, other than the student reps? Because usually, we have a great turnout when students are being recognized. And I think this speaks volumes for our parents. They want to be heard. They want to be a part. They are the primary educators of their own children, and I think we should hear everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Excuse me. Nicholas Kapoor, 109 Meadows End Road. I want to thank everybody for coming out and your continued coming out, meeting after meeting. A hundred years ago, women obtaining the right to vote in our country was divisive. Seventy years ago, in parts of our country, black children and white children sitting in the same classroom was divisive. Forty years ago, even acknowledging that LGBTQIA+ people exist was divisive. And one year ago, a deeply divided Supreme Court said for the first time that you can't be fired just for being LGBTQIA+ in our country. And so I felt the need to respond to some comments that have been said over the last couple of weeks and months. You can call me dangerous, divisive, liberal, disruptive, or whatever name that you'd like to call me, but that won't stop me from proposing and speaking about what I think is good policy for our Monroe Public School System as a member of the board. The transgender and gender nonconforming youth policy provides context and definition. The policies of the school system should reflect what the community looks like. Two years ago, approximately 15% of MasC students identified as something other than heterosexual. Now, that may make people uncomfortable, but that is the reality. Whether we like it or not, agree with it or not, acknowledge it or not, society has changed on this issue. Ten to 15 years from now, it'll be laughable that we are even having this conversation. It is 2021, and it is time for our board policies to reflect that. These kids are here now, and this policy supports them. I wholeheartedly refute and reject that this policy puts any student in danger. It does the opposite. If we're going to rely on a singular list of protected classes in state law to protect our students at all times, then why is this board not moving to rescind our policies that talk about racial and ethnic bullying and harassment if all we need is the word "race" in statute? Why are we not rescinding our three board policies on religious accommodations if it's covered under state statute? No one has answered that, and that's because we need definition and context for all protected classes. And that's why we have those policies and need this one. It is simply the responsible thing to do. Since the beginning of our discussions on this topic, in addition to some parents who've spoken to us here, 13 parents have personally reached out to me, seven of whom have specifically stated that their children are not out to anyone but them, and those students are at all levels of our school system. The anxiety that students feel in being who they are is real, and is a policy going to fix everything? No, but it is a start. I emailed each board member on August 9th and asked you to contact me if you'd like to talk about this policy. Alan and Jerry did, but two months later, I still have yet to hear from anyone else. And we can't have a conversation about this if you won't talk to me. I want to hear what you have to think, and I want to come to a resolution on this. The late civil rights icon Congressman John Lewis said, quote, "Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get into good trouble, necessary trouble," end quote. Those are words that will continue to inspire me because sometimes a little bit of good trouble is what we need to make change for the better and bring our policies in line with the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else last call? All right. We will move on to the report of the superintendent. Thank you.
Just wanted to start by, with Friday being October 1st, we have our October 1 enrollments. I know we're constantly chasing enrollment figures throughout the year, but there's really two times when our enrollment figures are static and gives us a good idea of where we are as a district. October 1, those are state reporting deadline day for all school districts to report to the state, and then the last day of school. So those two days are relatively static. And I just wanted to share kind of where we are right now, and I think this puts a little context into some of the conversations that we've been having about enrollment and increasing some staff that we've had to do over the summer, especially at our elementary schools, but also to put it also in context with a lot of the conversation that Darlene's had with special education as well. I'm not really going to talk at all about special education today, but just to give you a little bit of an idea, what I did here is, this column here, and I'll go through each school, is where we were as of Friday, the state reporting day, where our enrollment was. This column here is where we were on the last day of school last year. So how much did we increase from the October 1, from the last day of school last year? I think even more importantly, and as we talk about implications for our budget, is this column right here is our enrollment as of approximately November 30th. When we presented the budget last year, these were the numbers that we were using, and this is what we kind of forecasted. One of our budget assumptions, if you remember, was that, you know, we'd seen an uptick in enrollment, and we thought, okay, you know, if this table's out from here, and it has not. It has continued to increase. So if you look at where we are right now, Monroe Elementary, and I think one of the big ones that stand out for me from Monroe Elementary is our pre-K numbers. We are at 58 students right now. We ended the year last year at 50. At budget time last year, we had 39. Pre-K, those are our three-to-five-year-olds that are in the program. As the year goes on, that number will get... there's no doubt about it, that number is going to get bigger, okay? Because kids are going to go from... turn from two to three. So if you look at Monroe Elementary, from Friday, the last day of school, we're up 22 students. From Friday to the... when the budget was presented last year, up 32 students. Again, the big number to me that stands out there, it's probably been the most stable school, with the exception of the pre-K numbers, which I think also mirrors a lot of what and reinforces a lot of the conversation that Darlene's had. Font Hollow has definitely been... has definitely been our pressure school. This is the one that has increased the most. The biggest increase that we've seen anywhere is at the kindergarten level. We had 86 kindergarteners last year at Font Hollow. We have 125. We went from four sections of 22 to six sections of 21. If you look at it from the end of last year to this past Friday, 52 kids, 70 more students at Font Hollow, from when we presented the budget last year to where we were on Friday. Steptney, similar story to Font Hollow, not quite as traumatic. You know, without going through every, you know, every single grade level, you know, 443 to 456, up 13 students from the end of the year, up 29 students from when we did the budget presentation last year. At the elementary, it's much more difficult to absorb the enrollment. At the high school, at the middle school, it's a little bit easier because kids are taking a number of classes, you have electives and whatnot. Unfortunately for us, and we've talked about this before, our increases have been primarily at the elementary school, because when you look at Jaffe Hollow, we actually have... our population has been pretty static there from last year to this year. We're actually down two students from the end of the year, up six students if you consider from the budget presentation last year to now. MasC, again, we're up a little bit. You see, we're up 19 students from the end of last year, 13 students from budget time. Very manageable to absorb those kinds of numbers, especially at the high school. Even some of the numbers we see at the elementary school, it would be easier to absorb those at MasC where kids are divided into, you know, we literally have hundreds of sections of courses at MasC for kids to filter into. So I just wanted to keep the Board apprised of this. I know this... I will share this with the Board of Finance. I know we've been talking to them about enrollment numbers. We had to increase staff over the summer. We increased two kindergarten teachers, two other elementary teachers, a third grader at... a third-grade teacher at Steptney and a fourth grader. I might have those backwards, a fourth grader at Font Hollow. At the last meeting, Darlene talked about adding another specialized person, and that's also tied into the transition program that we're going to... also tied into the transition program that we're going to talk about a little bit later. So I just wanted to keep everyone apprised of where we are right now, and, you know, as we get ready a little bit, I'll share the budget calendar and where we're going. Nick?
My question is, how are we on space? Like, physical space?
That's a great question. It's a great question.
And it's a very loaded question, I'm sure.
It's a loaded question. And, you know, Lee is here, you know, we moved, if you remember, we had a daycare at the, at Font Hollow that had two class, that was occupying two classrooms. We moved those to Jockey Hollow. One of those rooms became a classroom. So, you know, right now, without a major disruption, we have room to add a section of a course probably, and Lee, jump in if I'm misspeaking. You know, anything beyond that is going to, you know, we're going to have to reshuffle some things around. We're going to have to move some stuff. But I think we're going to need to pull together, I think we're going to need to pull together an ad hoc committee to look at, to look at our spacing needs, for sure.
Thank you. Joe, not to put you on the spot, we're at 33, is that 34?
That's 33, 34 right now, yeah.
And where were we last October 1? Do you remember?
Why do I not have last October 1? But we could have been too far off this 31. This was at budget time.
Okay.
So, yeah, we were probably...
So we've jumped 150 kids in one year, approximately?
150 kids.
Five percent.
Yeah. And all, I mean, primarily concentrated at the elementary school.
When we have to, beyond budget approval, when we have to augment staff, how do we address that within the budget, Joe?
So, right now, quite frankly, George, you know, we needed to, we needed to add staff. We have, you know, we have ESAR funds that we can, that we can tap into. Right now, I think we need to have further conversations with the Board of Finance, because right now, I know we needed, we needed staff. So worst-case scenario, I would use those ESAR funds to augment that. The problem with that, and I think we've talked about it here a little bit, is, you know, we're creating a fiscal cliff by doing so. If we, now, if we add those, you know, the staff that we need, and, you know, yeah, there's five certified staff, but, you know, with 150 kids, that also has included, you know, some additional EOL time, some additional para educator support. We have kids, and it's something we're going to really need to talk about in the near future. We have kids with really significant needs right now. And there's no reservation in my mind that kids coming out of 18 months of isolation are significantly, have been significantly impacted. We're seeing behaviors at all levels that are very atypical to what we've seen before. We're going to need support. We're going to need support. We have, you know, kids, you know, engaging in some things that, you know, you know, I guess we shouldn't be surprised that, you know, our ninth graders, their last full year in school was in sixth grade. You know, think about that. Their last full year of school was in their seventh grade, they left in March, and eighth grade was last year. They're in ninth grade now, so, I think I went off a little outside there, George, sorry. But that's how we've addressed, that's how, right now...
To date, that's how you've addressed it.
If nothing else, I would use the ESAR money. It would, I think it would be, I, you know, it would be disheartening to have to use it for that, because I think there's a lot of other needs out there to get kids on track.
But you've already had to augment staff...
Yeah.
...over the summer...
Yes.
...using a budget that was approved in April timeframe.
Exactly.
Okay, so how do you, how do you work with those adds to staff, given the budget that was approved?
So, right now, what I've been doing is I've been earmarking the ESAR money as, if all else fails, that's what we'll have to use.
Okay.
But I think we're going to have to, these are conversations...
And if there's additional staff that needs to be added through the year, the same would apply?
It could apply still, yes.
Okay. So more discussion with Board of Finance is required?
Absolutely. Absolutely. This, I wanted to share with you first, and we're going to share this with them. I know at the last, at the last Board of Finance meeting, Darlene did share, you know, the numbers that, you know, she shared, the same ones that she shared with us at our previous meeting.
But I think the concern is that that, ESAR money was not there as a backstop, we would be in a very significant hole right now.
Major hole. Major hole.
Right, because we're not budgeted for it.
Correct.
And we're already, we're already back, we're already augmenting staff. Now we're talking about possibly having to augment staff further as we progress into the year.
Yeah.
You know, so, agreed.
Yeah. And I think it's really important that, that in the coming months, that an ad hoc committee gets formed, because, correct me if I'm wrong, when Chalk Hill was opened, our enrollment was about 3,600 when we closed Chalk Hill. We're at, you know, we're approaching 3,350. You're not that far off from 3,600. There's going to be a significant space issue very quickly in Monroe.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question about STEM. Would you consider adding another section system if space got limited at Jockey Hollow?
Right now, Jockey Hollow, I think, is okay.
Keeping STEM numbers the way they are.
Keeping STEM numbers the way they are.
I think it's the elementary school that does the issue.
The elementary.
Right, but I'm just saying, as those elementary numbers grow, right?
Yeah.
Eventually, they're going to wind up at Jockey Hollow.
Yeah.
So my concern is not maybe now, but leading up as these numbers get bigger and bigger.
Can you go back to that, Joe?
Yeah, just go back up to Monroe Hall again.
Yeah, so we can see, like, the three elementary schools? You wouldn't quickly have them all, like, added together, like, what?
Uh, we have...
I was doing it quickly, like, next year's, I think the current fifth grade numbers are lower considering, but then as you start to go back, like, the lower grades, and they start to come in, that's where your numbers are really growing. And that's where I'm thinking, like, long-term.
Right.
Trying to get ahead of it.
Yeah.
Versus, like, scrambling, you know, when these kids are hitting the middle school.
Well, that's...
Yeah, what's our long-term plan?
Right, and that's why I think you need to get an ad hoc committee together sooner than later, because that committee is not a couple of months and it decides. I mean, that's going to take expertise of a company like last time that knows space, that, you know, that can help with that.
Yeah. But doesn't, if, you know, worst-case scenario, we had to use Chalk Hill, doesn't it have to be upgraded?
Chalk Hill's off the table, right?
It's, I mean, that would have, you know, like, yeah, that would need major upgrades. Three big things, I'm thinking, is the roof, the...
I think it, I think it's like, it's huge. Plus, doesn't the town own it now?
Yeah.
Right? So it's not even...
Right. I mean, I still, and I'm happy to give it off to somebody, have, and I'm sure Joe still has a copy of it, the feasibility study that was done, and I think it was 2007, and I want to say at that point, it was $35 million, the renovation. And I have that big binder at home, it's probably significantly more than that. That was 2007.
Yeah.
Jill and Christine, the redistricting that we did for all new move-ins, is that in place now?
It started as of October 1st, correct?
That's, we, that's, we have to start communicating that out now. I just don't know how much that's going to, I mean, I think we need to do it. It'll even things out, because you see that there are lower numbers, you know, at some schools, rather than others, but...
Yeah, and there's probably more we can build on.
Yeah.
We keep looking, especially now that we have a date of October 1st, since now it's going to go forward.
We're in it now?
We're in it now.
Okay.
So anybody moving into those areas are now, will be redistricted, or will be in the new school district that we align.
Okay.
But that's only going to help so much.
It's going to help very little.
Agree, right.
I mean, it's a start.
Yeah.
Right? It's a start.
Right, because if your numbers get up to 3,800 students...
Right.
There's no way you're going to fit that in five schools.
Yep.
That's the problem.
Right.
So you can redistrict all you want, but at some point, no school is going to be capable of having the numbers that they have.
Agreed. No matter how much you move them around, you're still dealing with square footage. It's not going to change.
Well, it was more like moving some away from Font Hollow to Monroe Hall that has more space.
Right, it's setting, it's setting the path for...
Right.
...future.
And again, we don't know what our numbers will be. This could be, you know, a COVID result of high of our enrollment, and we could start to, who knows? Like, nobody can predict the, I mean, as we know, from all the studies we've done.
And doing an enrollment study is not going to really give you...
Oh, good, Alex, please.
Our, our, our statistics...
Don't bring that up with Alan.
I know, I didn't bring it up purposely.
Alan's favorite study.
I imagine we're engaged like I'm alone in a room again, like, they'd have some kind of, some kind of something to give us an idea.
But I think it's a conversation you guys have to have, because, I mean, the last time the feasibility study was done, I mean, they had so many options, but a lot of them just didn't work, like...
No, there, yeah.
No matter how many configurations they did, there was very few options that would hold everybody with the five buildings.
No, yeah, because there, yeah, some of them were not even, you would have to, no, like, you would have to do...
You'd be putting kindergarteners with high school.
Right. You would have had to do major renovations to the bathrooms to accommodate young kids, the younger kids, so...
I mean, if you look at just the kindergarten numbers, I know those would be, you know, the longest to move ahead. I think there's like 254, 255, which if you look at the high school, it's like, oh, we're at, we have some with, you know, significantly more than that right now. That number, my experience has been, in watching this, it only grows. Every, every year, you're picking up students. I remember when my daughter, who's, you know, now in college, she was in a smaller class at the time, you know, as we were going through that topic, and I think she had, like, in, like, third grade, it was 223 kids. And I remember being like, ah, I'm going to keep an eye on that. See, she graduated with, like, 259 or something like that. So, you know, it picked up a good number of kids over the, over the years, and that's, that's going to happen here, I think. Go. Okay.
Joe, since the approval of the last budget, how many certified staff have we hired? Not included in the last budget.
Not included in the last budget?
Not included in the last budget.
The math coordinator, we put in ESAR 2 funds, and then the, the two kindergarten teachers and the two other elementary school teachers, so four elementary school teachers.
That's what I thought.
And now we're talking about the specialized teacher.
Okay. Thank you.
Certified.
And that's the cliff problem, yes.
That's, that's the cliff.
Joe, can I ask you a question? The ESAR money, the, I don't know if this is the correct characterization, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but the ESAR funding was supposed to be intended for recouping learning loss.
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And so, what you're doing when you're hiring staff, which is needed, there's, there's no option really, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's not that when you hire two new kindergarten teachers, that you are making up learning loss, it's just that there's more kids. It's not, it's not, it's not a new program, it's not something creating learning loss, right?
Yeah.
So I think that, I think that was one of the things that wasn't clear to me at the last Board of Finance meeting, that ESAR funding was originally for learning loss, and that's not what the money's doing. It's supplanting what is supposed to be operational money, really, like, operating money, right?
Yeah.
The other two things I just wanted to flow to the board is that, at the last, as we talk about funding and the, and the enrollment that's coming up, at the last Board of Finance meeting, there seemed to be a lot of confusion over what was discussed at our meeting, the previous meeting that we had. So I don't know if it's too logistically difficult, but any financial things that we discuss, anything, special ed, anything, should somehow be forwarded to the Board of Finance.
They can't watch us like we watch them?
I, I...
I'm just asking a question.
No, I...
Okay.
I'm just saying, in their packets.
I got you.
I think there was some confusion over what was in their packet and what wasn't in their packet, and we had something up on the board that wasn't in their packet. So I just think that if we talk about something like this or something financial, it should just go to them and be in the packet. You talk about it anyway when you're there, so... And the other, the second thing is, I don't know what other board members think, but I don't know if it would be completely unreasonable to request a joint meeting with the Board of Finance about a long-term discussion on this. I know on their agenda for many months, they've had a placeholder for a three-year budget model. I know it's been a placeholder because they're working on it and they're talking to different people. I know Ron is talking to different people, but I think this is going to be definitely something that we have to look at going forward. I mean, I, I was on a meeting with Donna and Joe, listening at the last Board of Finance meeting. I didn't agree with the actions they took on the budget surplus, but the ESAR money is supplanting some of the money that we gave back, and I think that, I think that all of us should be able to have a voice in that conversation. So just two things to offer up for, not for right now, but something to talk about later.
And I think your questions, your comment, Nick, about, you know, using the money for unfinished learning and whatnot, I mean, that was, that was the whole purpose, and we've talked as an administrative team about, you know, could we, you know, could we have done, like, an extended day program? Is there, like, could we do a really, you know, strong, robust tutoring program where we target students that have, you know, specific needs, and we give them, you know, one-on-one, one-on-three, you know, whatever, you know, small group support, and really identify, you know, academic areas where kids are behind right now?
One of the things that Cabe said at the summer leadership conference to superintendents, they told all the board members to cover their ears, but what they said to superintendents was, try to use your ESAR funding for programs that you've always wanted to institute that was for learning loss in normal years, right? Because in normal years, there are students who are perhaps not in special ed, but are, you know, there's a certain aspect of students that you have ideas for programming for, right? But you never have the funding because the budget is so tight. Use ESAR money to try that and prove to your board that those kinds of things can work, that can become part of your budget.
Yeah.
But we're not able to do that because we have to supplant operating expenditures.
Jeff, is there any relief insight? I mean, how's the market? Is there still high demand? I mean, if we're trying to look at the future, what's...
What I would say, looking at it from a real estate perspective, is Monroe has uniquely positioned itself as being one of the most affordable towns in Fairfield County, with excellent schools as the caveat. And, you know, so you see, obviously, we all know, you know, the farther south in Fairfield County you go, the more expensive it gets, and for families, especially young families, they look at our town as especially attractive. And, you know, even if you compared us with a Trumbull, Trumbull is more expensive than we are. So we're uniquely positioned to encourage young families to come here, and, you know, it's becoming more and more of a magnet. I mean, it's a good problem. We have excellent schools, we have excellent staff, but it's, the downside is going to be the numbers. And I, it's, there's a, it's, real estate is cyclical, in that it is slowing down. We don't see the influx of especially New York buyers, but you do see the places that are coming unaffordable, your Stanfords and your Norwalks, where young people tend to start, or, you know, maybe with a condo or apartment, coming out and, you know, looking for places to settle down. And this is a, like I said, a natural attraction.
And I think that, you know, with, with regards to jobs, where so many companies are not making it mandatory that you're in the office five days a week, where you need an easier commute in lower Fairfield County to New York City, you have families who are like, okay, I only have to be hybrid or, and go into the office one, two days a week. I can, I can, that's doable for Monroe as opposed to five days, where some companies that are like, you're full remote, and they don't have to go in at all. So now they have the ability to move further, to get some more land, get a larger house, excellent school district, and, and more affordability, and you can look at towns that you wouldn't necessarily have considered in the past because of the commutability.
I think it was, I think it was, I think Shannon said a couple months ago that people weren't just buying a house in Monroe, they were buying a house and an office, which is a different mindset than what people were looking at even, could I say, two years ago? Three years ago? And that's why you were seeing some of those larger houses go very quickly, because people were buying a place for them to work and as well as live.
Yeah.
I was going to say, so, next steps, because this is a very good analysis and discussion on what we're facing. Next steps is what's important to address it. So what are your thoughts?
I think we, I think we need to probably pull together an ad hoc committee to start looking at this and come up with alternatives.
Just to follow up on that, I mean, wouldn't the Board of Finance obviously be a part of any ad hoc study or not? I'm just, it, it should be a way to include them in the process.
Yeah, I think last time they did it, I think they had, they offered that to.
I wasn't on it, that's why.
Right, but it was offered to other people outside the board, there was parents on it.
There was, there was a great representation.
Yeah, so it was across, I don't remember who necessarily was on it.
I don't think there's anyone from the Board of Finance on it, the last one.
I don't remember.
I thought we offered, but I honestly, I don't think anybody.
Regardless of what we did last time, I think, it's a good idea to do it.
Yeah. I don't think you could do it without someone from the Board of Finance.
The question has been asked at our, at our meetings, at our, at our meetings, at the Board of Finance meetings, it's been, it's been asked to me about space, and I kind of implied the same thing, that, you know, there's room, but it's, it's filling up, but.
Continue on.
I think Darlene, can you give the special education report? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dar, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed one piece. Yeah, I just wanted to, um, just really quickly go over the budget timeline, very similar to the timelines that we've, we've had in the past, I can't believe, we haven't even really, you know, we've just barely started the year, and we're already, you know, we're gonna be, you know, looking at budgets and everything, but, um, starting in about, you know, about eleven days, you know, we'll, we'll start the meetings with, well, the meetings will, are the department heads, principals, and department heads will start creating their budgets, and we'll start having those meetings probably at the end of this month, beginning of November, um, to get ready for the draft budget right before, uh, or right after Thanksgiving. I know last year, the board had different folks that, um, you know, met with different department heads and whatnot, and I just wasn't sure, and I, I think we found that, you know, it was.
I mean, from a board perspective, I thought it was very helpful.
I thought it was great.
But I don't know how it translated to administrators and staff, but.
Uh, I think it was well received. I think, I think it was, I, I think it showed a, a nice collaboration between the two, so I'm all, I'm all for it.
We need to wait for the new board to be seated to know who goes where, so.
That's gonna be tricky, because the new board will be seated at the first meeting in December, which is probably the budget presentation.
Quite honestly, you probably even need to, amongst the people who are staying, choose it, and then if you gotta swap out, you gotta swap out, and whoever's not here gets assigned.
Or if someone's, if someone's elected but not sworn in, well, I, I, well, just kidding.
Dar, do you want me to pull your numbers up?
Please. Okay, so since I, um, reported during the first week in September, four new students registered with active I E Ps, and three students were referred and made eligible, which gave us an October first number of five hundred three. As of today, the special education enrollment is five hundred four, and they continue to enroll. So, we, we just heard about more today, so, um, it seems like every day it goes up one or two kids. I'd also like to point out that since the first day of school, there have been eleven out of fifteen referrals, eleven of those were parent requests for P B Ts. I've already reported that we are stretched thin in special education, and we have posted a position for an additional special education teacher. We are also looking to increase speech and language pathology hours and to hire additional care educators to help support the students. Again, I go back to, when we get new students with active I E Ps, we have to follow those I E Ps by state law, so. And that, any questions on the enrollment, I mean, go ahead.
So, five oh four, well, five oh three's up there, five oh four.
As of today.
As of today, and I'm gonna use Joe's, um, thirty-three, thirty-four, which was the number in the left.
Right.
So, that's about fifteen percent.
Fifteen point two five percent.
Oh, fifteen point two five percent. So, are we, are we in line with?
The state right now is, I believe, is at sixteen.
And are we in line with Dirk, Dirk B. schools?
I believe so, yes. Everybody has had this influx, and, um, especially in the area of special education with, um, new referrals, things like that. Part of it's due to COVID, um, you know, so kids coming back and, and parents being nervous about, you know, um, learning loss or, you know, um, so we are, we are trying, um, in Monroe to make good use of our S, S R B I system, you know, where we, we're putting interventions into place before we sit down for P B Ts, and, and, you know, we wanna make sure that we've tried all, um, the interventions that are possible to help support students before we go, um, to identification, so.
For, um, speech pathology, you looking for a full-time?
No, I'm just, we have a couple of speech pathologists in the system who are not full-time, so I'm just looking to increase their hours so that we can help. I mean, we have, at this time, we're really struggling to cover the hours.
What do you have at the elementaries, one in each building?
We do have one in each building, um, Juan Howell has a one point two, but they have, you know, their numbers are a lot bigger. And then our, our middle school, one of our elementary and one of our, in our middle school, speech pathologists share the students who are up here, because, you know, as we get up into high school, it's not as many, so they share, but, um, but it's getting quite difficult for them to get up, um, into the high school and STEM. And, you know, when, when you have that travel piece in there, it sucks up some of the time, so. So, we are looking to increase those hours.
And the special ed teacher would be elementary as well?
Uh, no, we, we, we're still trying to figure that out with the numbers. Massey got hit, um, really hard. Massey right now has, um, a hundred forty-five, um, special education students. So, they, um, we're looking to put some, some of that person out, but Massey, maybe split it between Massey and STEM. We have to, we really have to look at the numbers carefully, um, now that we, you know, we know that we have to go there. And we do, we do have one person right now that's split between Monroe Elementary and STEM, so that, that split might go to, um, Monroe Elementary and, um, Juan Howell for their increasing numbers. But we have, we really have to look at it and see how we, we can best make it work. Again, the travel time hinders some of that. If you, if we do Massey and STEM, there's no travel time. But then you get into the, the block scheduling is different than the STEM hours, so, um, but what, we're, you know, try to make the best use of it, as we can.
Darlene, um, with the five oh four number, I, I think in your last budget presentation, you said from last year to this year, we're up about sixty students?
Yes.
So, that number keeps creeping up too, right?
It keeps creeping up.
So, that's, that's sixty students more this year than we were aware of at time of budget, when we set this budget, right?
No, that sixty students was, um, that was from the start of last year to the start of this year.
Okay.
So, the, um, I probably have that somewhere.
I was looking for a comparable number to Joe's plus one fifty, you know, since we budgeted.
Yeah, um, I'd have to get that, I'd have to get that for you, David. I could get it for you definitely.
We got that because we reported last year on the, so we can just go back and find out.
Yeah, we'll go back and look at it, yeah. I think at, when we, um, yeah, I, I'm not even sure what the, at the time of the budget, oh, wait, here it is. So, at the time of budget, what, what were you reporting, Joe, at December?
It was like November, I guess.
Okay, so that, that would be, we were at four hundred fifty-three at that time. So, that would, yeah.
Yeah.
So, up fifty since budget.
Yeah.
Out of a one fifty.
Out of a hundred and fifty since budget.
Budget approval or budget?
Budget presentation.
When we, yeah, when we, yeah, when we presented the budget, yeah.
We're flat since June, essentially.
Essentially, yeah.
Since, yeah.
But usually, and Darlene presented this last time, usually, we're down from June because we graduated, like, we had graduated thirty kids.
Sure.
So, we were pretty flat, but normally we're.
But you had the same number register as graduated.
Graduated, right, right, yep. Okay, the next one, Joe?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, as you know, our budget fluctuates from day to day. All the tran, I'm gonna start from the bottom up, if you don't mind. So, um, all of the transportation has been encumbered to date. However, there are still students who are not accessing their full programs, and they plan to return to school this year. So, we, we have some students, um, who, you know, are medically fragile, they're, they're getting some of their program, but they, they do plan to, um, come back, you know, during the middle of the year. So, we'll wait to see what happens there. And then we did bring children back to districts, so we are saving on transportation on some of those students too. We have encumbered all the budget legal fees, and you'll be able to see this monthly, um, we just encumbered it all, and then you could see where, um, year-to-date expenditures, what those monthly invoices are as, as I report each month. Again, we encumbered all that was budgeted for under the independent evaluation. Several evaluations had already been paid this year. We had some done, conducted during the late summer months and, and already this year. Some of those, most of those have been paid through, out of grants that we, that we applied for this summer. This is a line that I added to my chart last year because, um, as one to watch because of the increase in mental health. So far this year, we had seven out of the twelve referrals for evaluation have been due to students struggling with mental health issues. So, I'm, you know, I, I remain concerned about this line, um, with, you know, with the upcoming P B Ts, and, um, you know, as Joe had mentioned, you know, we have kids who were, um, in isolation for such a long time. They were, you know, focused on their social media, and now we're seeing behaviors like we've never seen before. So, um, I, I am concerned about that. Um, and that was part of the reason that we, um, we instituted the B Ts in, in all of the schools too, to help with some of those behaviors. Um, all of the tuition lines have balances, um, which are good, um, due to placement changes since we adopted the budget. So, this includes students who were brought back to districts and students who have not successfully, who have not fully accessed their programs to date. So, um, we did bring some students back to district, um, in, um, for the start of this school year, so we did save some money there. And then we do have, like I said, we do have those students who have not come back fully to their program. They may be doing just a couple of days a week right now, um, in outplacements. Which brings me to the last line, and that's why I worked up from the bottom up, um, to out, the outside agency line. When students have changes to their programs, um, in some cases, we have to bring in outside agencies to support that, their needs as they transition back. This month, it just so happened that there was a, a charge for, a change, I'm sorry, a change in service providers for a student. It was, you know, moving from same, same service, okay, so let's say, um, let's say it was a reading service. So, same service, but, um, there was a change in the providers. Right now, there's a P O for both, in for both providers, so that's why we have such a large negative number right now. So, when, as soon as we get the bill from the last one, Tracy will close that P O, and then that, that number will come off. So, it will go down a little bit there, so you'll see, you'll definitely see a difference in there, um, next one. Questions?
Hey, Darlene, are you seeing any disruptions to the transportation for special ed? I mean, I, I'm just asking because we've heard some of the extracurriculars with athletics and.
Yes, yes, we, we are now, right now, um, for students that we, we hire outside, um, agencies of transportation's companies for children that we have to transport to different schools, we, we are having a very difficult time getting, um, getting that service. And then when we, in our community program that you'll hear about in a little bit, um, in, in our unified sports program, same as the athletics, you know, we don't, we don't have the buses available to, to get them there. So, it's, it's been, it's, but that's been a struggle.
We have used some ride sharing, I think.
We did, we have used ride sharing so that, um, if, if students are going to the same vicinity, maybe at different schools, but if they're very close, we will, um, we will put them on the same, but, um, same transportation, and, and, you know, they'll be able to get them, as long as the times work with school, that they're not, not late for school, or they're not getting picked up late, we can do that. We have also, um, done some ride sharing with other districts, so, for instance, if Newtown has somebody going to a school and they're coming through Monroe anyway, we, they stop and pick us up and, and, and we do that, so. So, we, you know, we try to be, I mean, right now, we're okay, everybody's getting to school, but, but, yeah, it's been, it's been difficult.
Has it affected your budget lines yet?
It has not, well, I do have, I do have, um, one transportation company that almost doubled. Their fee, they doubled, almost doubled their fee.
What do you mean they doubled their fee?
To, to transport a student.
One student?
But what is dou, what is the, I mean, a hundred to two hundred is different from ten thousand to twenty thousand. What does double mean?
Well, I, I'm, I, I can't off the top of my head think of what it was, but it was, it was significant, um, where I went. Oh, boy, um, you know, that it was a significant amount.
I mean, have they taken advantage, what, I mean?
I think that I, um, I think that they, they, they came out and said that their fees were doubled. We were, you know, we were transporting the student with them, and, and we can't find anyone else to do it, so, um, you know.
Just to give, I mean, this isn't a special ed thing, but, you know, there's a cross-country meet tomorrow. The high school couldn't get a bus.
Yeah.
John had us send transportation waivers to the students to see if their parents could drive them. But there's, All-Star couldn't do it, we called other bus companies, they couldn't do it. So, some of these bus companies, they know they have us.
Yeah.
So, they're doubling their fees because they know they have us?
I'm sorry?
They're doubling the fees because they know they have us?
That's, yeah, I mean, like I said, the last, at the last meeting with the, uh, you know, the, the, the transportation costs for the middle school cross-country team, we had to go outside of All-Star, and basically spent the, the transportation budget in one or two weeks.
And let me clarify, Alan, when, when, uh, when I saw that contract come through, I said, okay, we have to look for, we have to look for another company, we have not been able to find another one, um, that's, that can transport students, so.
That's what I was.
And you know we're obligated to transport, so.
And, kind of to piggyback on what Alan says, that's what I was gonna ask is contracts, if we have contracts, is that within these contracts that they can raise the rates like, like that? Or, or we need to get contracts where we're at a fixed rate during the year, right? So.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I would look at those contracts and, and see and hold them to those.
Yeah, and I did when it came in, and they come in over the summer, and when it came in, I immediately said, we have to look for another provider for this, for this run. We, to date, we've been unable to get one.
So, in the contract that we have, they can raise the rates like that?
No, they, they raise it midstream, they, they started it after July.
They started this year, because we only, we do it by year, so they started this year with those higher rates.
So, they use that opportunity to raise the rates?
Yes, yes, yes. And because I can't find anyone else to replace it, I have to transport students.
Yeah.
It's gonna be curious, when is our All-Star contract up?
End, end of this year, I believe, is it this year?
It's gonna be very curious because across the country, there's the shortage of people working and stuff. So, to get more drivers, you may, they, companies may be experiencing a huge increase in having to pay drivers, which is gonna translate into a huge increase in contracts. Because they have to pay more, because they are not attracting people like they once did be, you know? So, that's gonna be quite interesting to see how that plays out.
Fuel has gone up?
What?
Fuel has gone up?
Well, I, it, I think it's more of a shortage of employment shortage.
Oh, no doubt, yeah.
They can't get people, so in order to get people, they're gonna have to raise their rates on how much they're paying in order to get people to actually work.
Yeah.
And that's gonna translate into a, a much higher contract.
Of course, you see that across the, the country right now, in any position.
Oh, absolutely.
You're paying, you know, more per hour for, for everybody.
Yeah.
Question, Darlene, on the encumbrances. So, um, how, how are you, how do you arrive at those numbers? Is it, because in some cases, it looks like we have a zero, well, at least one, zero dollar amount year-to-date, but fully encumbered.
Right.
Uh, and then other ones, it's, there's a, there's a, a big variance. So, is it that you have an anticipated invoice coming in? Or have you just written the P O for a certain amount?
So, on, on all of the lines, the outside agencies, the tuition, the transportation, those are all contracts that we have, and, and we encumber that money. On the independent evals, what we do there is we have, um, we have service providers who, um, you know, do these evals for us, so, um, we've kind of put in a P O for three of those people for the year, and then we use them as, as they come up, so.
All right, so you'll write a blanket P O and then you invoice against that P O?
Right, right.
Okay. But, but those are like recurring costs? You'll get like a similar invoice every single month or something like that?
Depending on how, how many evals that we, that we.
Okay, all right. How are legal services charged? Is it like a yearly rate, or is it like by the hour?
Yeah, it's a by-the-hour, we get an invoice every month.
Last, last piece on, on mine was just a, uh, just a notification of the Cade Capz Convention. It's gonna be a one-day event this year, if anyone's interested, the registrations in the, uh, in the agenda, um, November twelfth at the Mystic, uh, I'm sorry, Mystic Marriott Hotel in Groton. I don't know why they hold it there and not like in Middletown or something in the middle of the state.
of the state, but it's, if anyone's interested, just let me know.
So we aren't the presentations?
We are.
All right, so I'm not moving? So I guess NEASK? Steve, come on down.
Steve's gonna give a presentation on, thank you. And you can leave that there for Danielle and Fran next. Steve's gonna present on the NEASK, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. We have our decennial visit, our 10-year visit coming up in October, starting October 17th. They had come out two years ago for their collaborative conference and made some recommendations on areas that they thought that we could learn and grow as a, as a district. I'll let Steve talk about it, but just a reminder to the board, if you saw, I think in my previous weekly review correspondence, the NEASK committee would like to meet with as many people, as, as available as possible on November, I'm sorry, October 17th. It's a Sunday night, they come in Sunday through Wednesday, the 17th through the 21st, 21st, whatever it is. But on that Sunday night at six o'clock, they would like to meet with as many board members as possible. It's virtual though, so as soon as we have a link, I imagine they'll get it to Steve and Steve will get it to me and I'll forward it to him. Go ahead, Steve.
So he pretty much did my presentation for me.
Goodnight.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the lead-in, obviously, they are here on the, on the 17th and, and it does begin with a meeting with the Board of Ed and with Joe, the superintendent. It is a virtual meeting, there, there actually, there's eight professional educators from across the state coming to, to visit Masseyk. And as Joe mentioned, there was a smaller group here a couple of years ago in November of 2019, they came. The process, if you've been on the board for a while, it's changed. The new, new standards are, are, are different. The process is very different as, in terms of how it impacts the school and the school community. But for you as the Board of Ed, I'll get into a little bit of the changes, but for you, it is important, obviously, they do begin with you on that Sunday night. We have accommodations for them already arranged. We did opt for an in-person visit. The only piece of it that is virtual is their piece with you. So they will be close, they'll be in Shelton, but it will be a virtual meeting, but we'll get to the link and as many of you can attend, please do. So not knowing, you know, your familiarity with NEASK or anything, but, but obviously the New England Association of Secondary Schools and Colleges, it's an accredited agency, it's a, it's a nonprofit, you know, organization and it's, you know, its members go across New England, obviously, but also they work with schools outside of the U.S. as well. You know, while I've never been, I do, I do have some colleague friends that, you know, went over to Japan and looked at schools as, in relation to these standards and, and basically what it is, it's a, it's a quality control. These standards are best practices in education. You know, as I said to, you know, many of the parents and even to the students last Friday, you really don't want to attend a high school, or nor do you want your high school in your community that is not accredited. So they're coming in and they're going to basically assess our alignment to these standards and principles. Now, we've already done some work in terms of self-reflecting on where we are in relation to the standards and principles. My predecessor, Dr. Greenwood, submitted a report in October of 2019 that the, the staff and community should have had input on and the self-reflection. The November visit in the, in that same year would have then affirmed that self-reflection. And then now, since that time, they had identified some areas where, where we could improve. And our job during this visit is kind of talk to those different areas and what we've done to try and improve in those areas. Big obstacle, obstacle, obviously, that nobody planned on was COVID. So why is accreditation important? Again, it's important because it's a system of checks and balances. So it's accountability for, for us as educators to, you know, strive towards these principles that are again, best practices for, for education. You know, for, for students and their families, obviously, you know, college representatives, you know, want to know that, you know, Masseyk is an accredited high school, you know, coming out of New England and accredited by, by NEASK. For, for school leaders, we're, we're held accountable to those principles and standards and because that is what is kind of best for kids. So it's important for the community, obviously, for, for the high school to be accredited. So they're coming here for, for, obviously, to mainly get a sense of the culture and climate of Masseyk as it relates to academics, of course, we're an academic educational institution. But also, they're gonna look at the culture and climate of the relationships between students, relationships between students and teachers, the involvement of students, teachers, parents, et cetera, in the decision-making processes, et cetera. They're going to, again, review our alignment to these set of standards and principles that are best practices in education. The priority areas that were identified when Masseyk did its self-reflection for the visit in November, again, I had to submit a report on what has been done since, since that visit in terms of aligning Masseyk closer to those principles, but also addressing what those priority, priority areas are. They're gonna give us feedback, you know, it's, they're critical friends coming in and basically, you know, we have gone through the process of reflecting on where we are. The principles kind of define where we want to be, okay? So we've kind of made these claims, they're coming in to see if our claims are on target. We have plans for getting closer, closer alignment to those standards and principles, and they're gonna give us feedback on whether those are in the right direction or if they have other suggestions based on what they hear from you, parents, teachers, and students, et cetera. So it's a, it's a, it's a good process, it's actually one of the best professional developments an educator can go on. I went on a visit in May, I think I told you that before, it was virtual, it was tough, there were challenges to, you know, getting a sense of the culture and climate of a school when you're behind a screen. But in terms of, you know, reflecting not only on what they are doing, but how that can then impact my own practice was, again, the best professional development.
I think, I think it's important too, just to emphasize on what Steve said, is a lot of times people think, oh, NEASK is coming in and they're, and NEASK is sending like this group from, you know, this, you know, ivory tower that they live in, that's really not, it's not the process. It's, it's other educators from the New England area that volunteer their time. So Steve just mentioned he was on a visit, Steve sat on one of the NEASK visiting committees to whatever school it was.
Lewis Mills in Burlington, Harrington.
So it's other, you know, they, they try to get a good cross, a good cross-section of, you know, principals, assistant principals, teachers from various, you know, STEM teachers, communities teachers and whatnot, to go to these, to go on these visits.
Mm-hmm. So the priority areas that were identified by, by Masseyk staff and the community as well as kind of affirmed by the collaborative conference visit in November are these five right here. Define a district-wide vision of a graduate, which the Board of Ed did adopt in March of 2020. I think the week after, everybody went home for COVID. I think it was on the Board of Agenda Minutes that you adopted it then. So, so that's a good thing, we have defined that, so that, that's, that kind of is all that we really had to do to kind of address that, although there's, that'll be, you know, important as we go forward. But implementing student-centered learning strategies, reflection, you know, and the last two are kind of interrelated about, you know, kind of taking that collective responsibility for, for all of the needs of, of students, as well ensure, ensuring a safe and positive and respectable environment. So those are the priority areas. So I, again, with the help of the, the staff, have submitted a summary report already for the visiting team. They're gonna come and they're going to kind of affirm what we've said and give us feedback on our action plans for those. So for vision of a graduate, as I mentioned, vision of a graduate, you know, it's kind of shifted through the years between, you know, it went, started at 21st century skills, core values, beliefs, now it's kind of the vision of the graduate. Again, I commend Monroe Public Schools. I was not here for the creation of the Monroe Public Schools' vision of a graduate, but the manner in which it was done by including people from all walks of the community in the adoption of this, absolutely the, the right and best approach. The committee, or part of the committee that worked on the vision of a graduate competencies, which are in the leftmost column, you know, the first two being critical thinking, problem-solving is one of them, curiosity the other. Subcommittees of that group worked on these, the learning progressions for the vision of a graduate, which are just kind of that 10,000-foot view of what can kids, what does that mean at these different grade levels that kids can do? Okay? And, and again, I'm not here to read these to you, you know, I will absolutely make sure that Joe gets you copies of it, because these are important for you to understand, because what NEASK is definitely going to, to, to tell us is, if this is what Monroe Public School says is important for all kids to know and be able to do absent of content, none of these talk about content, but if this is what that committee in the district says is most important, this is what should be just driving our decision-making, our professional development, the manner in which we instruct, assess, et cetera. Okay? So it's kind of the, the, the middle of the target, if you will, these five competencies. So the subcommittees, they did outstanding work last year, a lot of it was done kind of virtually in very small groups through, you know, the pandemic year and hybrid year that we had last year. And the committees put together, you know, these learning progressions for, for all five of the vision of a graduate competencies, communication being one, and the last two are empathy and compassion and social emotional readiness, which obviously played a huge, huge role, especially last year, and equally important as we continue to move forward. So when they meet with you on that Sunday night, they're going to, without a doubt, they'll, they'll be asking a little bit about the vision of a graduate and how you feel that it should drive your work as, as a board. A brief overview of the schedule, again, as I said, they meet with you to start. I'm guessing because they're all coming to the area Sunday night, there may be just more than just the chair and co-chair that meet with you virtually, there could be a couple of the members of, of the team as well there. I doubt it will be all eight, but either way, it's virtual. And it, and they do stick to their 45-minute time, so it's six to 6:45. You know, again, I just went on a visit, one of the first things they say is, when you're, when you're running a meeting as a member of the visiting team, stick to the time. Okay? So, so I can assure you, it'll be that 45 minutes that you have. And again, just so you know, you know, Monday, they're here, they come here, Monday is a heavy meeting day for them, they're meeting with staff, students, parents, they will observe some classes, but it's kind of heavy, more heavy on meeting with, you know, kind of certain stakeholders and then, yes, they'll do some class observation. Tuesday, it kind of flips, where they're, they're in a lot of classes for, for more of the day, and they do have some meetings with staff. And then Wednesday, they'll, they'll kind of meet and observe classes as needed because it's primarily their report writing day, and they will meet at the end of the day with myself and probably Lisa Peterson and Mark Sworz as the assistants, but also Bonnie Waring and Nancy Zakowski, you know, have graciously agreed to stay on as the co-chairs of the steering committee, so they'll be part of a meeting, and then they will debrief quickly with the whole staff on Tuesday. After that, it probably will be, probably a good month or two before I see a draft of a report. Typically, they'll send me as the principal a draft of the report and I have an opportunity to kind of review it, and, and if I do have any kind of suggestions for edits, I can make those suggestions. It doesn't mean they'll do the edits, but they will consider them before it ultimately goes to the executive board of NEASK. And then they're the, the visiting team isn't the one that makes the determination of our accreditation, it's the NEASK executive board. So that probably would be, probably early January, mid-January would be my guess. That's NEASK's decennial accreditation visit in a nutshell. Any questions?
Good luck.
Thanks.
Yeah.
No?
It's gonna be positive. Thanks, Steve.
It, it is, I'm actually, I'm actually looking forward to it, which I can honestly say through the old process, I never, those words would never.
Next presentation?
Next, we have.
What is that community?
Yep. Danielle and Fran. So I know Jen Parcell in the past has talked about our new transition program for 18 to 22-year-old students, and we have put a couple of awesome staff members in front of it, the program really takes off, and it's, it's really, it's really a positive shining spot for us right now, and I'm happy to have Danielle and Fran with us to share a little bit about it.
Hi, everyone. My name's Danielle Hawley.
And I'm Fran Pacheco.
And we are here to talk to you about our new program, Monroe's Community-Based Transition Program. I'm sure you all learned last year that Connecticut changed their law and districts are now required to support, offer support to their special education students until their 22nd birthday. And when you look at our surrounding towns, they, many of them have their own transition program, so it was time for us to create our own. We are currently running a state-approved transition program. We are calling it Monroe's Community-Based Transition Program. We really want a new name, we are desperate, we want an acronym, but we don't want to rush it. So if anyone's creative, please reach out to Jen or Darlene, because we would love a new name.
That's not too snappy.
And it's getting too permanent, it's already been a month, so we really need a new one. Since it is a post-secondary community-based program, the goal is to teach the students to become young independent adults, so we do not run this program out of a school campus. We actually run it at the Lower Stevenson Station One Firehouse, so we owe a huge thank you to the Fire Department of Monroe because we are so lucky to be in the current facility. The staff members included in this program are myself, the special education teacher Danielle Hawley, Fran Pacheco's the transition counselor, Melissa Vadera is the school psychologist, and Tina Boecking is our paraprofessional. Sorry, I forgot to change it. Throughout the year, we'll also have visitors come talk to our students. For example, we plan to have Officer Larson come to talk about internet safety, and Sean Kennedy from BRS to talk about vocational services that are provided by the state. We currently have five students enrolled right now. They are a combination of previous Masseyk students, and to follow up on Darlene's comment before, we also brought back students into the district that were previously outplaced. So this is a very brief slide just to show you what our day looks like. The students come in at 9:00 a.m. for their functional life skills until 10:30. At 10:30, they head out into the community until 1:30 p.m. to, for their work experience. On the next slide, I'm gonna talk to you about the functional life skills, and then Fran will talk to you about the vocational portion. This slide just gives you an overview of what we will cover throughout the year. In addition to these units, the students will participate in social group, where they will work on social skills inside and outside of the workplace in addition to their self-advocacy skills. With Mrs. Vadera, the school psychologist, and they meet weekly with Mrs. Pacheco to have a transition group. We also incorporate 30 minutes of movement where the students are able to pick the workout they would like to choose, whether it's yoga, a low-intensity workout, or Zumba. We also cook once a week, the students pick out what they want to make, they find the recipe they want to use, create a grocery list, and estimate the total cost. On Tuesdays, they go to the grocery store and head back to the firehouse to make the meal. So far, we have made omelets, homemade macaroni and cheese, spaghetti and meatballs, and tomorrow, they're making pancakes. And now I'm gonna turn it to Mrs. Pacheco to talk about the vocational piece.
So the students go out approximately 10:30 in the morning, when you're including traveling time and the time at their site, so the time at their site is about approximately two hours, okay? They are gonna be paid a stipend, a very, very small stipend, to help with their budgeting skills. Those are the sites that we have presently. Big Y is not a work site, it's where they go grocery shopping. We've had many more sites in the past and then. Those are the sites that we have presently. Big Y is not a work site, it's where they go grocery shopping. We've had many more sites in the past and then came COVID. So we have been in touch with the other sites that they've gone to. They've been very good, you know? They have to follow the CDC guidelines. And, you know, I've been getting responses, oh, please call me in October, please call me just before the holidays and we'll see where we are. But those sites also include, you know, a daycare. They also include a doctor's office. There was the food bank. We also had town hall and the library. Some of the other reasons, aside from the guidelines, is that they have employees and volunteers, but not enough work even for them and they don't want to lose these volunteers. So, so we can understand that and we're hoping, hoping that things will open up in the future. So at these sites, they do learn skills. They learn how to initiate. They learn self-advocacy. They learn, you know, in order, their social skills in order to be able to greet someone upon their arriving and upon their leaving. The person who to go to to answer their questions, okay? Being able to communicate what they liked about the sites, being able to identify and communicate what their strengths are, what their weaker areas are, and being flexible to take feedback on how they can improve on their, carrying out their task. I'm trying to think what else that we do. As Danielle mentioned, BRS would be coming in and they're going to be coming in once a month for a group meeting and they provide the level-up services until the age of 22, when they transfer over to adult services.
Did you guys say BRS, what that stands for?
Bureau of Rehabilitative Services. They're under the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities.
And Fran, you have your, you have your email there for a reason. I understand.
Okay, so the thing is, if you know of anyone in the community who's willing to take us on and have the ability to give us a chance, I am more than open to listening to any suggestions and going over to talk to them. So yes, that's why my email is up, yeah.
Shameless plug.
So, and that's, yeah, any questions?
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies, for providing an overview of that program to us. I think that's the first time we've had that information on that life skills program within our district. All right, we will move on to old business. We have four policies up for second review, vote anticipated. The first one is 0521, equal opportunity, non-discrimination, 3324.1 contracts, 6142.101 student wellness policy, and 6172.4 Title I parent involvement. Do I have a motion to approve these policies as presented? Thank you, Nick. Second, Jerry. Any discussion on these? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. We have nothing else this evening under old business. There is nothing under new business, so do I have a motion to adjourn, Jerry?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Christine. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passed.